Good evening and welcome to the January 17, 2018, meeting of Milton School Committee. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a ballot for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, let's see, agenda, I'm going to move item five A, one, I, ahead of four, after citizens speak. And other than that, I have no changes to the agenda. Anyone else have changes?
No.
Good. Is anyone here for citizen speak? Okay. All right then, Superintendent, if you'd like to introduce our first guest.
Thank you Chairman Donahue. I'd like to invite to the table Pierce Middle School's principal, Dr. Karen Spalding, our special ed director, Tracy Grandow, and a very special Pierce Middle School student, Josh Fracotti. Will you join us at the table? Josh is accompanied by his very proud family. Welcome. I'm going to leave the introductions and the explanations to Dr. Spalding, Josh, and Ms. Grandow. Welcome.
Thank you. I am extremely excited to be here with Josh and Mrs. Grandow. We, this year, at Pierce Middle School, celebrated Inclusive Schools Week, which is the first full week of December each year. It's sponsored by the Inclusive Schools Network, and we celebrated that week. And one of the ways that we did that was to Dawn Durant, who's our inclusion specialist and team chair, conducted a competition for students so that they could express their ideas around creating inclusive schools and the importance of creating really nurturing, welcoming environments for all students. And so, I am so excited to be here with our winner of that contest. This is Josh. He is a sixth grade student at the Pierce Middle School, and he did bring his winning essay, so he wrote a piece. And if you have a couple of minutes, he is going to read it to you.
Please.
Love to hear it.
Absolutely.
It all started out when he was a boy. He was a child with a disability. He had a rare case of Down Syndrome, which makes you smaller and a little trouble learning. Most of the time, you will need an aide to help you around school. This was a case for young Mickey. He was a ten-year-old boy in fifth grade at Collycock Elementary School, Milton, Mass. He was never a big fan of learning, but he loved superheroes. And if you asked him any fact about one, he would be able to answer it with ease. His dream was to become one, just like his favorite superhero, Superman. He found out about his disability in third grade when he was noticed the other kids had no aide to help them with their work. He went home that day and asked his mom about it. This is when he first found out. The next month at recess, one day, a few big tough kids came up to Mickey and called him a loser and threw a rubber ball at him, then walked away laughing. For the rest of the year, the same kids would always come up at recess and bully him, then walked away laughing and threatened him if he told anyone. Although in school life, Mickey's life only got worse. People would throw food at him, laugh at him, call him a loser, even at the point of his senior year in college. He was never terrified, and he was terrified to tell anyone, so he didn't. When he finished college, Mickey thought to himself, "I hated my life through school. I never wanted to go, except for engineering class." He loved the idea of inventing something, anything, nothing. So, when he first finished school, he bought his own apartment and started creating things. He created every useful invention we use nowadays. He created all the new superheroes, The Flash, Spider-Man, even Iron Man was his idea. Until one day, as he was trying to invent, he remembered his life from school. He started feeling bad for every kid who needed to go through what he went through, being called names, not being allowed to play kickball or foursquare. So, he kept, swept everything he was working on off the table and got to work drawing blueprints. He was going to find a way to use his talent to stop other kids from being bullied. So, after a long and sleepless week, he finished his project. Mickey Jones was going to be the first real-life superhero. He invented a suit that allowed him to fly, run at the speed of light, and he has built a tracker that senses any kid being picked on. He was going to use this to stop any bullying in the world. After all, he knew what it felt like and wants no kid to feel like that. The first three days of having the suit, he thought it was broken because he got no notifications about the kid in trouble. But the fourth day, when he was tampering with the suit, an alarm went off. He entered the suit and directions pointed back to the school that started his incidents, Collycock. Off he ran, getting there in three seconds flat. He entered the recess yard, and by the foursquare board, a kid was being disluted. A young first grader who goes by the name of Cameron was being told he can't play because he was autistic. Mickey stepped in. First, he walked to the premises and talked to the kids disluding Cameron, and just talked. He questioned them. "Do you think it's funny or cool to say you can't play? Are you too good for him not to play with you?" This made the kids feel guilty. Then Mickey went up to Cameron and said, "If you're ever told you can't play, tell an adult, no matter what they threaten you with." "Okay," replied Cameron. From then on, if any kid was going to be picked on, Mickey would stop the bullies.
Very good. Excellent.
That was amazing.
Really well done.
Chairman Marelle, please.
So, Dr. Spalding, can you explain a little bit? Were all of the students at Pierce asked to write about inclusiveness in the school? And then, was it a contest and they were read, and how did this come about?
So, we, it was open to anyone who was interested in participating. So, this was done all on Josh's own time and own thinking. And I think, I will admit, when I first started reading Josh's piece, I was sad. And the part of it that sort of struck me the most is this idea, you know, although it's describing someone who's building a superhero and all of that, it reminded me, and I don't want to put words in Josh's mouth, he can respond as well, but just this idea that we all have that superhero in us and that drive and desire to want to make things right, and that we can do that. And we can do that in our very own superpower way, just being human to each other. And so, that's what was particularly, although at first, as I said, I was sad, but again, that idea of we have it within us to make positive change really happen. But yes, this was on Josh's own time, not homework credit, not, you know, that kind of thing, something that he wanted to do and for other students too. And some did artwork, some did posters. They could express their ideas in whatever medium that they chose.
Dr. Craighead.
Josh, where did you get the idea for this? What inspired you to write about this particular character and add the superhero stuff, which I loved?
Well, I started off just by writing like a few other stories that I just did for fun. So, when I first heard of it, I thought I'd write a story, and then, I don't know, it just kind of came while I was writing it.
Well, it came well. It was really good. Thanks.
I think you have a future in writing. You did an excellent job. On behalf of the school committee, we'd like to give you a little token of our esteem for your artwork and your essay.
Congratulations, Josh.
Thanks.
We're very, very proud of you. And Josh and his family who's here today, they're somebody I thought of, Josh, whenever I hear about your family. And this individual mentored Ms. Gormley and mentored hundreds of principals and teachers and represented the Milton Public Schools. Josh is the grandson of Mr. Ofield, who was an unbelievable, all due respect to the school committee members here, an unbelievable school committee member who gave his entire life, morning, noon, and night. His children could attest to that. And he would be so proud to see these grandchildren and to see you at the school committee table reading this. He was so good to us, and now to see all of his grandchildren in the Milton Public Schools and you being recognized has special significance.
That's great. Very nice. Keep on writing.
So, yes, so that was, my comment to you is, I have been told that the key to successful writing is to write every day, that writers who want to write, that's whatever you're writing about, write every day. So, I would encourage you to keep doing that, and I look forward to more.
Because you have a gift.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. So, now, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Yes, so, we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to move to our presentation by DRA, and I'd like to thank them for coming out this evening in the snow and weather. And I'd like to thank Bill Ritchie, who's our head of Consolidated Facilities, for coming out as well. So, this presentation is the fruits of labor over years at this point. It was initiated by former members of the school committee and former members of the facilities subcommittee, including our former chair, Member Walker, who wanted, in conjunction with ourselves and other members of the school committee, a plan for maintaining these wonderful facilities that we have. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, and we can take things from there.
Thank you very much. Tom Contessi with DRA. Good to be back here. Been associated with Milton now, I think, going on twenty years since the start of our study of the public schools back in the late nineties. I want to, first of all, sort of congratulate both you and the town for undertaking this. Not many towns are as proactive as this in looking forward as to what it takes to maintain your assets, your buildings. We hope this will be a valuable tool for Bill especially, and you and others in town to use going forward for the next number of years. What we did, we were hired, it was a year and a half ago, I think now, to assess and develop a sort of long-range plan for maintaining these buildings, looking not just at what might be needed today, you know, what might be broken or deficient today, but trying to project the longevity of all the basic materials, systems, equipment in the buildings so that you could, from a financial point of view, plan for the coming years. And in the end, we organized it into four, five-year plans so that it covers the next twenty years. Because even though the buildings themselves are designed to last, you know, forty, fifty years and beyond, there are obviously lots of components to those buildings that do wear out, that do have certain shorter lifespans than that. And so, we wanted to identify those, and working with your committee, your long-range facilities committee, and with Bill in particular, and his people, try to, excuse me, allocate, you know, properly as to when these expenses will come due. And we took a couple passes at it. There's been a few drafts of this report. We did kind of fine-tune it so that, as best we could, in a reasonable fashion, tried to even out the expenses so that they didn't all hit at one time. Although it is, you might say, a bit unfortunate that you undertook all your schools in a relatively short period of time, so a lot of materials will be kind of reaching the end of their lifespan at a certain shorter period of time than most. But again, I think with the kind of planning that you've already undertaken, you can deal with that. I did bring extra copies. I know we got it to you electronically, but I'm going to refer mostly to the, sort of the basic report, and probably the key page is page nine, if you can turn to that page. It's labeled Executive Summary. It has a couple of charts on it. Those are high-level summary of the numbers and costs that we came up with after we and our team went through all the buildings, did those kinds of projections, as we said, about the lifespans of major systems and materials, worked with Bill, who's already, you know, been working on shorter-range, five-year plans of projects that he knows need to be undertaken. And then, we further kind of filtered it into at least three categories of priorities. So, there's high priorities, what we said were lower priorities, and then items that are more maintenance items. And so, that, I think it would help in going forward for the town in looking at some of these things to be able to, you know, understand what are the neediest aspects. You might imagine that things like, you know, roofs that keep the building weather tight, ventilation equipment that keeps the building, you know, up and running, boilers, those sorts of things, those are high priorities that, you know, you can't delay those once they go bad, and you can certainly plan for them if you know they have a certain lifespan. But other things that are, like finishes, finishes do wear out eventually, but it's not as critical that you, you know, replace them immediately sometimes. You can live a little bit longer, or you can do things over time, not necessarily do an entire school at once. You might be able to replace, like this vinyl tile floor, you know, a bit at a time each summer, say, when the school is vacant. So, those things were more lower priority. And then, there are certain maintenance items, like painting, landscaping, that are regular expenses. Bill has a very good record of, you know, what's been spent the last few years. We know that every few years, you know, a piece of hardware will break on a door and things like that, that those can be budgeted too. So, those are included in here as well. And some of those, as I say, the town may already be planning for. So, the bottom line here, though it's, you know, significant, some of it may already be built into your financial plans. But to get to the big numbers, it may have shocked you at first to see a number like fifty-seven million dollars. It sounds like, you know, you could build a whole new school system for that maybe. But the reality is, if you think about the value of your assets, and I think we wrote this in the summary, the replacement cost for the current school buildings, in current dollars, is somewhere around three-hundred million dollars. And if you take this fifty-seven million and think about it over twenty years, this comes to, you know, somewhere like one percent of that three-hundred million dollars. It's, you know, somewhere around three million dollars times twenty years. And this does include escalation, we should say that. We did build that into the formulas. So, we priced things in today's dollars with our cost estimators, and then we did escalate it. And I believe we used five percent, which is, you know, you might say conservative. Hopefully, things stay a little bit lower than that, but, so that's how it totals up to fifty-seven million over twenty years. The more important number might be, look at the high-priority items. Those come to thirty-one million over the twenty years, the four, five-year plans. And again, what's mainly in those numbers, the major components are roofs that do have a certain lifespan, twenty, twenty-five years. Rooftop units, those mechanical units that, the ones particularly that are on the outside of the building, exposed to the weather on the roof. The controls for the buildings, the HVAC controls, which is kind of a major, you know, wiring and software project that, you know, eventually each school needs to be brought up to date on. It really, in the end, will save you energy and give you better control and management of your buildings. And then, also adding emergency generators to schools was in this category too, is one of the major expenses to bring them up as a real-life safety kind of an advantage for the town to have at each and every school. So, those are the major things that we did see in most every building within this twenty-year period needed to be addressed. And then, obviously, there's a long list, and we won't go through all that detail, but there's a long list, a very detailed list for each individual school. And it's in a format, we worked a lot with the committee and with Bill so that it's a workable tool going forward. This isn't, you know, just a report to put on the shelf right now, but hopefully you will refer to it year after year and that Bill can work with the spreadsheets. It's relatively common software, Excel spreadsheets, that can be sorted in a couple different ways. If you want to look at it school by school, you can do that. If you want to look at it year by year, you can sort it that way. You can even sort it by type of project. If you want to look at, you know, packaging, say, a couple roofing projects together, you can look at it by the category of work as well. So, we hope it's, you know, usable and workable in that sense. So, those are the, I think, the major points, but I certainly want to, you know, be available to answer your questions. I know there's a lot of information here, and Bill, I'm sure, can also answer a lot of them too. He's very familiar with this information. So, feel free.
Dr. Craighead, and before you get started, I noticed, Dr. Pavelcheck, you have the actual spreadsheet there in front of you.
Yes, it was emailed to you, but if you...
Yeah.
It's a fairly...
Lengthy and exhaustive document.
Seventy pages.
A little light reading. Yes.
Dr. Craighead.
I was just curious, under maintenance items, and I'm on page ten of the report, all of the elementary schools, except one, are budgeted at ninety thousand dollars a year for maintenance, but Tucker, whose square footage, I believe the square footage of that school is not larger than the other ones, is budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars a year maintenance. Could you speak to why that's the, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars for the five-year plan, each five-year plan? Could you speak to why that's the case?
I'll see if I could. There's a lot of information. That particular anomaly didn't occur to us immediately, but let me see if I can answer that here.
So, while you dig for information, I will point out that one of the things, when you do go through the spreadsheet, one of the things that I found particularly helpful was, you get a real longitudinal view for major expenditures, i.e., as you said, roofs and boilers and things that are currently in year six and seven and that a five-year, simple five-year plan wouldn't capture, but that when you start to, you know, expand your horizon, you can see what's coming down the road and things that you need to plan for to get ourselves ready as a district or, you know, for thinking about construction based on our enrollment issues to try and incorporate with other things as well. So, I found that particularly helpful.
Yeah, I did too. But this isn't an item that's high priority or low priority or, you know, a big project. This is just simply scheduled maintenance, and I wasn't sure why there was more money being asked for for one school versus the others of the elementarys.
I think I can pinpoint the difference, though. I'm not sure I can explain why exactly. One of the maintenance items that requires ongoing testing and inspection and maintenance each year are the sprinkler systems inside the buildings. And for the other elementary schools, we were carrying one thousand dollars a year for each of the five years in the plan. For some reason, at Tucker, that number is three thousand dollars. So, there's the two thousand dollars, times five years, that is the ten thousand dollar difference. We can investigate that, though. The engineer had some particular reason why they were recommending more there than others, but that's a good catch.
So, you don't recall if the sprinkler system is older or...
They all went in, you know, with the new school, with the renovated school projects, so we'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, some of the systems, you know, obviously like the Collycock Cunningham School, that's one of the, that school actually has a fire pump house, so it has actually a fourth floor, so there's a lot more components, and it's got a lot of dry systems in there. So, we have to, you know, and obviously, the fire protection engineer, you know, we got this report, we, you know, kind of conked through it fifteen different times. We've been going back and forth trying to fine-tune some of the pricing, so we can actually talk to the fire safety engineer. But we had like five or six special engineers that actually put this report together, different companies, so it's, this is, it was a lot of information.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Member Rolf.
So, thank you for this, and thank you for the facilities advisory committee to, you know, to have someone put, you know, put this together and to work with Bill and et cetera, et cetera, because it seems that it is very advantageous for us to be able to look at long-term what needs to be done. So, I guess my next question, though, is, and this is, I don't know if I, to Dr. Pavelcheck and to Dr. Craighead, but knowing that we were working on this and doing this, do you think moving forward, you know, and again, like even for the one-to-five-year plan, even if it's just the maintenance, well, I'm sure the maintenance is already in our budget, but even low priority, I mean, rather high priority, do you think next steps would be to look at the budget yearly and see if we can incorporate, what we could incorporate in to keep the maintenance? You know, I know, like, the way we got here in the first place is, you know, to Band-Aid buildings, you know, do you fix something or do you cut a teacher, right? You know, but after so many years of Band-Aid in buildings, you had to rebuild them all. So, it's this thing of keeping proper maintenance for, you know, doing due diligence so that you don't have to rebuild them all because you're just ignoring and Band-Aiding. So, I just didn't know if, I'm sure, you know, the catalyst was to, you know, to do this, but as I often say, as my colleagues would say, it's all great, but how are we going to pay for it, right? And I was just wondering if that's sort of the next step strategically in finance to figure that out.
Dr. Pavelcheck.
The, you're correct, the maintenance part of it, which basically is about two-hundred thousand dollars a year, is something we already budget for. Much of these other things, to take a high-priority items, for instance, which with escalation is about twelve million dollars for the next five years, or, you know, two-point-four million dollars a year, the majority of those items are going to be capital projects of one form or another, whether they're bonded capital projects or they're small enough that we can pay for them with, you know, one-time funds or whatever. And two million dollars in capital projects a year is not insignificant, but we do do a fair amount of it, you know, we've been doing about two to three hundred thousand dollars anyway in non-bonded capital projects and in bonding more, so you don't, we're not at that two-point-four million dollars a year yet, but we're probably halfway there this year, I'd say, in terms of bonded expenditures and non-bonded expenditures. So, it's, the numbers are huge, but they're, you know, that's because you're aggregating twenty years. It's, they are, I won't say they're completely doable, but they're, certainly, we're on the path to trying to make some headway into this, I think.
So, just the, thank you, I still appreciate for all the work. On page two, leading to page three, the two things that jumped out at me, just with the mention about the importance of the Consolidated Facilities Department in the process here, that their department says the department has hired a licensed craftsman, project manager in October of 2017, and plans to add a facilities maintenance assistant when funding is available. And then, when you flip over to page three, there's that second paragraph that just talks about that many of these projects can be completed in-house, but that the staffing of the Consolidated Facilities Department will play a key role in the project. And I'm just wondering, does that mean the facility grow the department, have consultants? Like, I'm just wondering, is that part of the, you talk about this in facilities as a town?
Well, I guess I can probably speak clearly in that. So, obviously, you know, we started, you know, so back in 2012, when I became the Consolidated Facilities Director, we did the initial one study with DRA. It was called a condition study, and we did, it was town and school buildings, but it wasn't really to this level of detail. And I think getting more into the department, starting to grow the department, I started in 2012 by myself. Now, there's eleven of them in the department. So, there was enormous commitment from the town to keep funding these positions. And, you know, every few years, I look at the needs of what I think I need to do this job, or to eventually leave the job to somebody else to do. But, you know, I mean, it's a process. I mean, I take a lot of pride and ownership in this position. You know, I've been on eighteen years in this, you know, in the town, and I, this, to me, when I retire... facilities director, we did the initial one study with DRA. It was called a condition study, and we do, it was town and school buildings, but it wasn't really to this level of detail. And I think getting more into the department, starting to grow the department, I started in 2012 by myself. Now there's 11th in the department. So there was enormous commitment from the town to keep funding these positions. And, you know, every few years, I look at the needs of what I think I need to do this job, or to eventually leave the job to somebody else to do. But, you know, I mean, it, it's a process. I mean, I take a lot of pride and ownership in this position. You know, I mean, I've been on, you know, 18 years in this, you know, in the town, and I, this, this to me, when, when I retire, and hopefully it's going to be for Milton, this will be my legacy. I want to make sure that this works, and I, I built these schools, and I want to see them, you know, be, be maintained for the next 50 years, you know, but, so I, I, you know, I work with DRA and saying, these are the skill sets that we need. And if you read that, the engineers, and I really had nothing to do with this, they, they said they can't believe for the few staff that we do have, how well we may, that we're actually maintaining all these facilities.
That's great.
We have 700,000 square feet of space. If you, if I, I've done a couple of studies with some of my other colleagues, most towns with, for, you know, they have a million square feet, probably are running with about 15 maintenance people. We have seven. That's, that's enormous, and we're still doing a great job.
Yeah.
How, why we're pretty successful is because every year, we go for green community grants. So a lot of the stuff like boilers and lighting that we have in this report, we're actually pulling about 300,000 a year, you know, every, every other year to green communities trying to get some of these projects done. But it's going to be a challenge. It's going to be, and we will probably, I tell people, don't look at me trying to maintain $50 million worth of assets.
Right.
I can't do it. It's impossible. But if we don't, this, this department is going to maybe, take it from 50, maybe down to 30 or to 25 million by having ongoing maintenance and fixing the roof when it leaks, fixing the floor tiles. But eventually, things that just kind of wear out. You have to replace the boiler. You have to replace the roof. That's what this department's not going to be able to do, you mean, but, you know, working with DRA, that's the things we have to kind of look for down the line. These are big-ticket items. It has nothing to do with maintenance, it's just that they're going to wear out.
Right.
If I could add too, even though we're not, you know, municipal management kinds of consultants, you know, we are architects and engineers and so forth, we did want to include that, that paragraph in there because we wanted to encourage the town to have that discussion. We, we think it, it is worth weighing the options of expanding Bill's department with some in-house expertise versus hiring outside services for some of these projects. There certainly are many things, like Bill said, that are going to be beyond the scope of an in-house department, but there may be others that the town could achieve more economically with, with in-house staff. And I think it's worth pursuing that discussion town-wide.
And it just kind of jumped out at me in reading the report.
Member White?
When I was on the warrant committee three, for the last three years before serving on the school committee, Bill used to come into the warrant committee and give us a list of all the projects that he had completed. And, you know, one of the things I'm thinking about is I'm focusing on the schools, of course, but thinking that it would be very helpful maybe for town meeting and to put it somewhere where other towns people could see, you know, maybe the last three to five years, what maintenance projects town-wide you've done, and then maybe to think about, if you could think about what, and how those were paid for, whether by grants or capital money or by budgets, operational budgets, and maybe thinking about what's next so that folks can see what's coming next, like, is the Tucker roof a priority? Because I read that, that wasn't replaced when we renovated that building. I'm just wondering if it would be useful, do you think, to think of, put it out for town meeting and for other people to say, this is what we've done, this is how they've been paid for, this is what's coming up next, just so people can be educated about the scope of the work that is needed.
Yes, of course. So actually, we actually, so I'm on the capital committee, so, and we actually had that conversation this morning that the capital committee is really going to look at maybe, you know, May meeting or maybe the, just the following fall, of looking at the capital and how we're going to be spending money over the next five, you know, five years. We really need to present this, I think the next phase, we need to really get this to the capital committee, because they really need to endorse this, you know, and, you know, I'm thinking that I'm going to actually, you know, be explaining what, what this project really is, and then maybe take that to town meeting eventually. Because these are things that people have to know about. You have to be transparent, say you have $300 million worth of facilities, this is what it costs to kind of maintain them in a professional manner. But, you know, there's going to be, you know, the interesting, you know, not interesting, but it's, there's a lot of competing factors out there. We have a lot of major projects over the next 20 years here with fire stations and DPW facilities and these type of studies, but you still have to tell people, this is the story. You build these buildings, you have to maintain them. And that's, you know, whether you get the funding to do it, but at least you have to put it out there.
And will you remind us, which is the roof that you were able to re-certify and re-warranty?
Well, so we just, we, we just, we just did the Glove, the Pierce Middle School. But so we, so, so the interesting thing is, so when we built all these schools, a lot of the roofs really weren't done because they were still under warranty, so we actually dissections all the roofs. Over the last 10 years, we kind of maintained these, these roofs are, some of them are out of warranty nine years ago. There's, and they're still out of warranty, but we put coatings on them to kind of get a, a few more years. But they're coming to their useful life, so, I mean, so, so now we're looking at the, and I had my own five-year plan, but next year, we're going to try to do the Tucker Elementary School down the line from there, it'll be the Glover Elementary School, and then wrap up Colley-Cott Cunningham. But when, so when we built the schools too, you know, Kyle and I was talking earlier, the rule of thumb before, maybe 10 years ago, it was a 10-year warranty. All the roofs today you put on is a 20-year warranty, or even a 30-year warranty. So the Pierce Middle School, the original roof was a 10, 10-year warranty, now we just did a 20-year warranty. So we could probably, with a good maintenance apartment, we can maintain a roof for almost 30 years. So you really have to have a good maintenance apartment, so even get 10, want to get another, another 10 a buck, a buck on that, with a good maintenance plan.
And I think it was your reference to the capital committee, Sheila, to your point, there's, there's discussion at the capital committee about the, the need to invest more money town-wide in the, the town-wide capital projects, a number of which we have on the school side, but that there are other examples of municipalities that, that fund at a higher level and, and do it successfully over time, and, and we are endeavoring to model that going forward. And I think that this plan, and in particular that spreadsheet, will serve as an excellent, you know, basis to build off of and as a model for some of our, our other departments in town.
Yeah, it's good, good to hear.
Yeah, I said, and I know, and I know what I, you know, you just, sometimes I don't want to share too, you know, like how many people you really need to do the job, because it's like, it's like, oh, boy, it's another salary, it's pensions, and it's, you know, you know, it's, it's costing, but you, you, eventually, somebody has to weigh it. Is it worth it to sub it out or have the in-house staff? I mean, the good thing that I've, I've done is that I, I wanted a, a work order system. So we started, you know, before you did, we did a, it's called School Dude. So we track every work, every worker in the department is tracked, what they do every day, how many hours, materials. We probably were close to $10,000 work orders, but those $10,000 work orders probably have the value of $5 million worth of work orders. That stuff, if you didn't have a department like this, that's, these, this project would be $100 million over the next 20 years, because things would just fall apart sooner and quicker. So it's great to have a good professional maintenance department. I'm trying to, that's, you know, the last four hires, we're a licensed master electrician, you know, a licensed heat inventor, heat ventilation technician, I just hired a licensed carpenter, you know, because the skill sets are changing and, you know, the systems are pretty complicated, so.
Anything else?
We forgot.
All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
And I'm sure we'll send, if anything else comes up as we look at the spreadsheets, we'll, we'll send our questions and comments along you, but thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for this very, very, very detailed report.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, Carl.
That's yours. Good to see you. Okay, good. Superintendent, I think, Superintendent Gormly, I think we're back to you.
Citizens of diverse Milton are here. I had asked you at eight, is everyone here, or did you want to wait till eight? Great. So we'll wait, you give me the signal when you want to go, and we'll keep, if it's all right with you, moving through the agenda. Next, we'll move on to the 2018-19 school year calendar. Dr. Pavelcheck, would you address that calendar for us? We need a vote from the school committee to approve this calendar. We begin receiving calls in the fall from parents and guardians who are looking for the 18-19 school calendar to make plans.
So this school calendar fairly closely mimics the current year's school calendar with a couple of exceptions, primarily in the second half of the year. This year, we had a professional development day, we have in January, later in the month, and looking at next year, what we're anticipating doing is taking that professional development day and moving it up to January 2nd. So the teachers would return on January 2nd for PD, and the students would come back on January 3rd, which next year is a Thursday. So it extends the, the vacation one day for the students, a little more flexibility for the parents. And since we moved the January professional development day forward, we also moved the subsequent two professional development days forward, but the one that's now currently set for February 6th, the PD half-day, was actually later in the month, and the one that is set at March 27th for next year is actually in April. So it moves that one away from the April vacation time and so forth, it tries to spread it out a bit more. Beyond that, much of the calendar is the same as, as last year. The professional development half-days coupled with the parent-teacher conferences in the fall are the same, and, and because the high school, middle school are on quarters, they, their parent-teacher conferences in November, while the elementary school will have a professional development day that flips in December where the elementaries are on trimester schedule. That's the same as this year, so that's, that's no change there. And everything else is just pretty much reflective of how a few holidays move around a little bit. But there's no Good Friday holiday, for instance, next year, because Good Friday lies within April vacation. So it just has, as a few things fall, there are minor changes. It's still 180 days of school, 183 days for the teachers, and some room at the end of June in case there are snow days.
And I'd like to mention, Dr. Craighead had asked about Yan Kippur, and I shared that the Randolph Superintendent surveyed area superintendents, and a few years ago, I worked with Rabbi Benjamin, who brought forward from his congregation the request that the Milton Public Schools have Yan Kippur off, and if Yan Kippur is on a weekend day, we'll have one day, the first day of Rosh Hashanah off. So this year, Rosh, Yan Kippur is on a school day, so we have Yan Kippur off, Yan Kippur. Several school districts, some of them have both days of Rosh Hashanah and Yan Kippur, some have none of the days off, but working with Rabbi Benjamin, this, this was a practice.
Thank you. Dr. Craighead?
I just want to clarify that I asked about Yan Kippur, not that I had any issue with it at all, but that I wanted to make sure it was the right day, that it started the night before and that we were giving the right day off. So that's the only reason I was checking on it. Thank you.
Sure. So I'll move to approve the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the Milton High School annual music department field trip. Assistant Superintendent Sheen?
Thank you, Superintendent Gormly. I'm presenting this on behalf of Maun Sykes, our Director of Fine Arts, and she had a preliminary approval request approved by the principal in accordance with the, with the district's field trip policy, and now she is submitting a request for final approval for 81 students to, to go to Philadelphia. And this is an annual trip where the music department is interested in providing cultural experience for, for students. And in accordance with the, with the policy, Ms. Sykes has presented a detailed itinerary of the trip. It, there's some wonderful shows here. When you read it, it makes, it makes you want to join them. And she has included a description of how the safety of students will be maintained, planned adult supervision. There would be nine chaperones, and the, the budget is, while it's not detailed, the cost is $478 per student, and what she did do was detail the fundraising on the, on the last page of the proposal. And all of these fundraisers have, will contribute to reducing the cost for each student. So, so some students will be responsible for less than $478 to include the bus transportation, hotel accommodations, and the performances, and some of the meals. And also, Ms. Sykes is ensuring that a statement that all of the information here will be presented to parents, and all emergency information will be provided.
Thank you. So I will move approval of Milton High School annual music department field trip.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
It's a great trip.
It sounds wonderful. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happenings, we have a blast going out tomorrow, so we'll move past happenings. You let me know, CDM, when you're ready, and I would turn it back over to you to move on the agenda.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to thank you all for your updated subcommittee rosters. I'll take a moment and go through them. My only, and we're going to revote these tonight as per our policy. The only change that I'm going to make is in several of the advisory committees. The description references subcommittees, so I'm going to find and replace subcommittee with advisory committee in, in some of those locations.
In the body of the...
Yes, in, in the charge, in the body of the description of your, Dr. Craighead, did you...
My, my point may be out of order. Are we looking at who's on these committees or just the descriptions of this committees?
Tonight?
Yes, both, okay. I am no longer on the facilities advisory committee.
Okay.
And I believe that Member White is interested in serving on the facilities advisory committee. Is that correct, Betty?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we could vote to make that change, or however that, I, I know you do the appointee, so.
All right. So we'll remove Dr. Craighead from there, and we'll add Member White to facilities. And would anyone else like to make any changes?
Yes. On the representatives outside boards and task forces, Margaret Everhart is no longer available to be on the inclusion task force, and I've been serving on that task force.
Yeah, inclusion. I'm not working. Is there anything else we can hand to Member White?
Is there anything else you'd like to...
Policy, health and wellness. Just kidding, just kidding.
You're doing such a good job on policy.
Oh, yeah.
I had a question. I noticed how for the health and wellness advisory committee, we had the 2017-18 members as sort of two different sections, voting members by sort of title and roles, and then specific names of, of members, and it made me think, should we be doing that for all of the subcommittees?
I, I think there's a specific reason we do that, and I'll, I'll turn it over to someone on my left who wants to talk to that.
Sure. So for health and wellness, we, these are the, these are the members that come right from the, the actual mandate from Jackie's requirement to have the committee, and then I just put the names beneath it. I, I don't know if I, which way makes better sense, the way that it's done for other ones or the way I, this was the only way I could keep track, essentially. That's why it looks that way.
So, yeah, so my question is, yep, that I, I'm glad you brought that up, Ada, because when I was looking through it, what I didn't, for the advisory committees, especially because we spend so much time hashing out, you know, who does what and what the roles are, that, you know, it's, no, it's, it's just that for the advisory committee, it was my understanding that everyone who's on the advisory committee is a voting member.
Yeah, there's another one who's not a voting member.
Right, so that, so I, I, to Ada's point, I was confused by that as well, because...
Because it's, those are, so if you pull out Jackie's, I'm sorry, we're just bantering there. If you pull out Jack, the, the health and wellness thing, it specifically lists it in this manner. It says, for, you know, like, a guy, a town representative, a guy, a faculty member.
Right.
So I just pulled that from the, from the thing and said, these are the voting members.
But can I... But can I ask, I guess my question is, in the bylaws of Jackie Morgan's committee that, you know, that had, does it state that they're the only ones allowed to vote because of this?
No, that's us.
Right. So then, so I would just, here's what it is. You could have, I would rather put it, especially because of hers, I'd rather put, like, required members and voting members. Like, I understand that you want to have, you want it noted that we are filling what is required, like, you know, there are other people that we have, community members, you know, and student members, but they're not required to be on the committee to actually...
Oh, no, students are required to be on the committee.
Okay, well, then I think, then I would make a suggestion to just have them all be the members, and they're all the voting, because I think it makes better sense that way.
Should we add a sentence? Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, finish, Dr. Oney, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, should we add, if we add a sentence at the end of the charge that says, along the lines of, you know, where this advisory committee fulfills
Oh, sure.
the FDA requirements, it shall also specifically include, and then we remove those titles down to the end of that block, so that it follows the same format, and it satisfies the need to specifically identify by title
Right.
the individuals that the FDA requires be on there.
Okay. So then take the top portion, say goodbye to that.
Well, and we'll just, we'll put it at the bottom.
Right, okay.
Just one further thing, sorry to mix this up. But I think that the members for the other subcommittees are in place for just this year. They're reappointed each year, and so that one committee has them listed by 2017, 2018 members, which, you know, I think we just want to be clear about what this document is saying. And I think that states it very clearly. These are members for this year and this year only. If they are reappointed next year, great, but it's not necessarily, and the way it reads right now, it's sort of unclear about what period of time are these people on this, on these various subcommittees. You know, is this document for subcommittees forevermore, or is it a document that's just describing subcommittees for this school year? I think it's just a little unclear.
So you're saying that you just think we should, across, I mean, I agree with you that I think it would be clearer if we just, for every committee, because, you know, in all of them, you know, people can move, you know, move out of town, and their kids, you know, their kids are on my committee from high school, their kids graduate, they're not coming out. So I think it makes sense that, because every year it does change up. So maybe we should all put 2017, 2018 members, just to clarify that.
Yeah, the top is of January 2018.
And I'm pretty sure that the original document said, said 2017, 2018 on it.
The title.
Yeah.
So we'll add that in the title.
Yeah, and then that way it'd be clearer.
Yeah. I do think, to Ada's point, Dr. Oney, I do think that's sort of the thing we've been struggling with, is to figure out yearly, who are the members of advisory committee that would be a part of it? And then they get filled in by different people, depending on who those people are. Whereas for Health and Wellness, we're not going to say, well, no, the Director of Physical Education isn't going to be on the committee. That's part of the mandate.
Right, that's required.
Okay? Whereas, you know, I don't know, some other committee, maybe that's not the case.
And one other question. I think at the top, when we put the year, 2017, 2018, that again, it should say Milton School Committees, Subcommittee and Advisory Committees.
Yeah, Subcommittee and Advisory Committees.
Two advisors over here.
Oh, I see, okay.
We can do that.
Yeah.
I can send this to Shirley.
And then, yeah, I'd rather be in the title, and then subcommittees, and then advisory committees. Yeah, that'd be clearer.
Okay, that's fine. Certainly.
So shall we defer our vote until next time and get ourselves a clean copy so that it's all?
That sounds good.
Sure. So just to be clear, we're going to say 2017, 2018 members.
Yep. And the front, at the top.
No, 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 but here, here.
No, no.
You just want it in the front?
I think that if we have Milton School Committees, Subcommittees and Advisory Committees, 2017, 2018 members, then we know that these are the members for just this year for each committee.
Right. Because we do have the policy that says they get voted again at our, we changed it, the meeting after the annual meeting, we already did that.
Good. I agree. I think that makes it, our policy specifically says that all of these appointments expire at the town election. But it does make clear to whoever reads the document that as well, without having to cross-reference the policy.
Great.
Good. All right. So we'll get a clean copy of that for next time.
Great.
And we'll vote on that next time.
All right.
And Superintendent?
CDM's ready?
You're saying that?
Just to preface before we begin, we, the school committee has a diversity policy, which school committee member, former member, Byrne Lovely, worked on when he was a school committee member. And in 2016, the school committee readacted the diversity policy. And so at the last meeting, we had Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, Milton High School Principal James Jet, P.S. Principal Dr. Karen Spalding, present this diversity report. And over the years, this diversity report has come from a very brief paragraph to request for data, and it has now turned into a report each year. It's supposed to be submitted in October. We asked the school committee for an exception because we were working on the data into a data report. And on my behalf and central office, we keep this report in our top drawer. This report has anyone who asks any questions around diversity in the Milton Public Schools on behalf of VIVU, our data specialist, from staffing to enrollment to accomplishments, are all in this report. As I reported last, at your last school committee meeting, we work with citizens of diverse Milton. We meet with, I'm not going to review of your presentation, we meet every month, twice a year. We have district-wide meetings that we partner. And over the years, it's developed from CDM in the audience when the diversity report was given, to being part of the presentation. And this year, I asked CDM if they wanted to come to the school committee meeting and rather than the night of the presentation, come at the next meeting and speak to, work together, and to the diversity report. So I'm going to ask CDM to join us at this table, all of you members, and if you would be so kind, Chris Navin, to make introductions. If you just pull up a few of those chairs around the table. Welcome. So we have an hour and a half presentation at our last school committee meeting, and we wanted to welcome you here this evening.
And just as a reminder, the microphones are for our audience at home, but not necessarily for the room, so.
So you should hold on and pass them around, so that the viewing audience can hear you, otherwise they won't be able to.
If you take those mics right out of the handstand, right.
My name is Chris Navin.
I'm Cara Delahunt Barbara.
Cynthia Geis.
Winston Berry.
Claudia Green.
Sandra Peterson.
Bob Booth.
Pat Lattimore.
So first, thank you for having us. I know this has been a big push in diversity, working with superintendent, and superintendent has been great over the last year. First, in thinking about this report, we want to say that, looking at the report, you see how dense it is, there've been a lot of great initiatives that have happened over the last year, and we're very happy with that. You can see the push that's happened, and the focus everyone has had. I'm a Tucker parent, so I can speak to some of the initiatives that have happened at Tucker. I was one of the people who started the basketball league that has gone really well. We had about 30 kids that came out and played, it was really successful. I had a great championship game. But as well, was a part of the music program, CDM was a part of putting that together. We have about 10 kids that are doing violin and clarinet, which has also been greatly successful. I think the thing that we're most focused on now is, over this past year, we've had a great focus on getting these initiatives out. A lot of initiatives have been posted, things have started, we're worried about getting these now system. Enthusiasm over time will fade. We want these things to not just stop, let's say, when my daughter's done at Tucker, I don't want that basketball league to fade away. I don't want a parent who's doing something at middle school, when their child moves on, for their program to fade away either. So those are some of the worries that we have in terms of this effort that we have now, how do we keep it ingrown, inbred, and a part of what we do here in Milton moving forward? Some of the other things we're going to go through, I'm just going to talk about, we're talking about some staffing issues and things we've seen in the report. So I'll start. One of the things that we were very focused on looking at the report was the numbers in the AP classes. Looking at the AP numbers, it is very glaring that the African-American population at high school is just not participating. That concerns us, being that it's an open enrollment. And with there being 119 students in the junior, senior class, and only 29 participating, and those numbers being so far below every other racial group, we're concerned about that. I saw in one of the initiatives at the high school level that there is a Harvard partnership discussing that. So we're interested in finding out what is the progress with that? What have we seen historically as to why those AP numbers are down? Because we feel that feeds also into some of the lower SAT scores, and some of the other lower numbers we see for the African-American and then Latin population. So we're very concerned about that issue there. I'm going to pass it now to Claudia, who's going to discuss some of the staffing.
Okay. Actually, I was just gonna, just have a one-note observation around students, which I'm sure this was not lost on you, but some, there's a couple of things that we noticed in looking at the data, which are probably a much longer discussion than can or should be had tonight, but a couple of trends that we saw at the Tucker, a pretty notable increase from 54% to 62% in the five-year period that's in this report of children of color, which is more than all of the other elementary schools combined. Well, actually, the number, as well as the percentage, is higher than in the other elementary schools. And in that same five-year period, a decrease in the percentage of children of color at the Pierce. And so just, both in numbers and in percentages, while both are kind of going in the opposite direction within the elementary schools and the high schools. So just, I'm sure there's been thought to this, and we would love to engage with you, you know, going forward about that.
I don't either.
As, in turning to staff, so on a positive note, we noted the increase in staff of color at the Collicotton at Pierce, and that's wonderful news, and sort of, you know, it's really worth looking at as to what's been contributing to that. And as, you know, consistently, the numbers at the Tucker and staff are higher. So again, just great to see, you know, what's working. And we noticed in the notes, that the data isn't here yet, but in the notes, that there were a number of new staff of color at the high school. So, oh, good. We had, did have a couple of questions around some of the data, noticing some of the numbers on the breakout for gender versus race were different, and so we weren't sure what the total numbers. So it was a little bit hard to kind of do a good analysis on that, but, and maybe that's an easy explanation, we weren't sure why that was. Another observation, just of sort of some of the things that we were a little bit concerned about, noting a steady five-year increase in the number of teachers, around 50 teachers or 15%, with only six teachers or a 1% increase in the proportion of teachers of color. So really, you know, not a lot of progress on that front, despite the principles and the diversity policy. And in addition to that, just looking at the comparison on the educational staff of color, teaching staff of color in Milton versus the state, and so, you know, much of the other data, you know, Milton is, we're way out ahead on some of the test data and enrollment in higher level, in AP classes, et cetera, and MCAS. But on the teaching staff of color, we are behind. And so that's obviously a point of color, and, excuse me, a point of question, excuse me. And so, you know, want to kind of look at why we haven't had stronger results on that.
Just an over, sort of an overarching comment about the report. The, we do remember when there was no such report, and it is great to have a report now with all this data. I think the report gets refined and perfected as we move along. One of the kind of small points, but important points, is as you go through these, as you go through the tables and charts, there is often a point of comparison, where we're comparing our data to some other reference point. Sometimes it's the state, sometimes it's within the district, sometimes it's the various subgroups among the students, male, female, students of color. And sometimes it's against each other, but sometimes it's them against the total student population. And we recommend that some more thought be given to how those reference points are used. Wouldn't recommend dropping any. But when you're comparing, for example, individual student subgroups, like African-American, or Latino, or English language learner, or low-income, to all students, it masks the difference between that subgroup and the highest performing subgroups, because that subgroup is included in all students. So in a way, you're comparing them to themselves. So we'd be happy to talk to V, you know, about some of these points. The only other point I would make is that while we've been talking so far about individual findings of having to do with academics or staffing and so forth, there are, at a more abstracted level, there's, there are patterns to look at. And the patterns, in one case, show that there is consistent underrepresentation of African-American students. So then what do you do with that? Well, we would like to see drilling down farther, further into that. For example, breaking out African-American students and all the other students by gender. So you could be talking about African-American males, African-American females, white males, white females, and then comparing those subsubgroups to each other. See what it tells you. Ultimately, the diversity policy calls for a plan. And while there are a lot of initiatives that have been undertaken, as Winston referenced, we're not sure that there is, we haven't seen presented as a plan, you know, a plan per se. In order to develop that plan, you want to use this data and drill down into getting into more specific issues that can inform the plan. So we hope next year, we're going to be talking with you about a plan, as well as a number of data points. I'll turn this over to Cara.
So we would like to bring to the school committee's attention our concern about the hiring process that was used last spring of the athletic director. And as you all know...
I'm actually, I'm going to suggest that this is not the form for that conversation, that we're not going to single out that specific process, but if you'd like to talk about hiring processes in general, we would love to hear your comments. hiring processes in general, we would love to hear your comments.
Well, as, as you all know, we, you know, CDM has been working with the Milton Public School administration for years on improving diversity in the workforce within the town's public schools, and that includes, that is, it's involved ensuring that the hiring process of new faculty and staff is obviously equitable, and inclusive, and transparent. And we were just concerned that, you know, our concern isn't about who currently is the director right now, or as a person, it was about the integrity of the hiring process, and the message that that sends to the public.
Well taken. Thank you.
So, we certainly appreciate personnel issues, and not trying to, you know, make, single out an individual, so we appreciate your concern. But I think that what we'd like to just make very clear is our concern, because the, each of the specific pieces, when you go through the process, really, for a group like ours, puts us at a disadvantage, and the transparency in the process is a problem for us. And maybe there's a different way to address this. We have had some conversations with the superintendent and her staff. I can tell you that we have not been satisfied with those conversations, and the resolutions that we've come. We think we arrived at a pretty good solution at some point, that unfortunately did not stick. So, I'm not sure how those types of things get addressed. A group like ours, as an advocacy group around diversity within the schools, you know, as we've said, we want to work very cooperatively with the schools, because we believe, and we have believed for twenty years, that this is the way to do it. But I would say that trust gets strained at some point. And so, we really do appreciate that you need to hear that from us. And without, so I, I think that the point is taken.
It is. Thank you.
Any questions for us?
I have a question.
Member O'Sullivan.
So, thank you for coming tonight, and reading the report so thoroughly, and giving us some new things to think about. I have a question for Claudia. I didn't understand the piece you were talking about, about Pierce. So you were talking about enrollment trends at the elementary school and the high school, but I didn't understand what you were saying about Pierce, sorry.
The...
So about, that they were increasing at the elementary school, increasing at the high school, but decreasing at the Pierce, is that what you were saying?
Correct.
Okay.
So, on slide twenty-five, have it in your packet, but, so at the Tucker, the number of students of color, and the percentage of students of color goes up. At the Pierce, the number of students of color goes, and the percentage goes down. While... Yeah. While the numbers kinda overall in the element, at the element, at both lower and higher, are going up, but they're going down at the Pierce.
Right.
Does it clarify?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I just, I couldn't, I couldn't grasp what you were saying. No, no, you were saying, I just, my brain got lost there for a second.
So when I hear that, my question is, where are those students going?
And why?
Yeah. Oh, should I have another question?
Please.
So Winston, I thought your comments about the systemic and the fadeaway is really important, and so maybe part of the long-term plan would be to think about how we layer those things at different levels, to lay, so that programs continue beyond. Because that doesn't, that happens in a lot of different ways. You know, like, there's a parent, and they're very enthusiastic about something at a level, then their child moves on to the next level, that parent moves on to the next level, and then there is that sometimes natural fadeaway. So that would be an important thing to think about, how we can sort of stack the, stack it so that parents naturally evolve into being involved in the, in the programs.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, for athletics at least, I'm finding some way to lend it into the athletic department at the high school.
Yeah, and when, I wish that you had, you know, I don't know if you had a chance to see the presentation, or when Mr. Jett and Dr. Spalding and Mr. Madden were here, but they talked a lot about the different ways of trying to layer it, starting at the lower grades and moving them up through the high school. But I do think at the elementary level, the component of parent involvement is super important, and to sort of support that piece, since elementary, those kinds of things are not organized in the same way as they are in middle and high school, sports-wise, yeah.
Absolutely agree. I think for, the thing with the elementary school level is, what we're trying to do at Tucker is to keep it, instead of it just being only the parents, having it be townwide.
Okay.
I think that's why you all received those invitations from the students, come out and see them, because if they see it outside of their schools, it becomes more than just my parents are involved, it's that the entire town is here to watch me do well, and that this program, what we've also, I think you spoke about a little bit, we're talking about trying to do it in between the elementary schools, having elementary school principals be a part of that, that as well. So it continues with the principals, and with the assistant principals, and goes on after the parents are gone.
Right. Thank you.
And, and we also, that's a good point, Chris, we also had high school students come down to coach, which I think is also an important part, some, some of them was older brothers, older sisters, and then having those kids come back, because they always look up to the older kids. So we're trying to keep it systemic, and at least, starting with it being town-involved, even the kids aren't playing necessarily town sports, that their school feels a part of the town.
I have one more thing, can I say? Sorry.
Yes.
Hold on, maybe I have to respond.
Can't you finish?
We were very encouraged by the recent performances from the students who are in the pilot program in music, at the Tucker, and we really appreciate the cooperation that we've gotten in stimulating that program. And we're hoping that it will continue, I believe it will continue for the rest of this school year, and then that we will achieve funding for it, partially from outs, at least partially, from outside of the school budget, to make sure that this can be expanded and, you know, spread among more students. I keep putting it, as somebody who's seventy-nine years old, I experienced what these kids are having back in nineteen forty-seven, okay? And in my school in New Jersey, every student had the opportunity to play music for six months. I'd love to see that, but we're starting, we're at least starting. So that's a positive thing. And I understand from people who've been in Milton for longer than I, that the program was more extensive, and it had to be cut due to budgetary reasons earlier on. But I'd like to, you know, build that back up, because I believe strongly, as somebody who has worked in the arts all my life, and sustained my living for, you know, in, in my field for more than sixty years, that music can, and theater, and dance can be a really important part, and visual arts as well, can be a really important part in what students encounter throughout life. And it's, it's not just for people who go into the arts. One learns things in the arts that are useful for, in every field, and I'd like to see that spread, not counting income, and not counting race. I'd like to see that developed everywhere in the Milton schools.
Thank you. And did you have another point?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm hogging the whole conversation. I saw I was gonna talk less and listen more in two thousand and eighteen. I did have one more thing I wanted to say. So when Mr. Jett was here, I specifically asked him about the AP scores, and about the program with Harvard, and particularly, the thing that struck me about the report is that fewer, fewer students of color enroll in the programs, but when they do enroll in the programs, have the same outcome as all other students, and achieve, you know, whatever they call it in AP scores, what do they call it?
A passing score.
A passing score.
Yeah.
And he specifically addressed those issues, and the work that he's doing with, with Harvard around that, and then in the conversations he's having with teachers about it. And then I ran into Dr. O'Neil at Panera, and she works at Harvard, she used to be the former superintendent, and she works with Mr. Jett and, and the different fellows that come here and stuff. So I really do think that a further conversation with Mr. Jett, he had a lot of really interesting points when he was here, and I know that he's working particularly hard on that piece, because that piece doesn't make a whole lot of sense, at all.
Member O'Sullivan.
Yeah, just to, just to echo that, yeah, so, you know, Mr. Jett, he did speak at length about that, so he is, he is aggressively working on that, you know, and did speak to, you know, has spoken to his staff, and to continually encourage kids of color, who say are currently in honors, in junior year, you know, sophomore or junior year, because you really don't take AP until junior or senior year at the, at the high school, to encourage them to, to, to try the AP, if they're a strong student, and they like the course, and, and what have you. So that is happening, so we're hoping that those numbers will, will increase. You know, it's not gonna happen overnight, like, you know, like anything. Just speak to the sports piece as well, same thing there, I think it's great what, what's been done at Tucker with the basketball program, and, you know, I, I served as the PTO lead at Pierce for many years before I came onto the school committee, and athletics in general was always a big concern of mine when we were at Pierce, because there, there is so, so much less of it at Pierce. I don't know if it at all speaks to, I really don't think we can, it's interesting to speak to the students of color going down at the Pierce, and then up at the high school, but a lot of people, a lot of parents would tell me that they would leave middle school publicly because there was no athletics, not enough athletics, because if you go into the private, any of the private schools in seventh and eighth grade, they offer that. And a lot of those kids, that's what kinda keeps them going to school, if they're, if they're a kid who really loves sports. My daughter was always a big Pierce player person, and they'd say to me, "You don't understand," because she has Pierce players, and these kids who wanna do sports don't have anything after school for that. But it does cost, it does cost money to have that, and little by little, they've started, they, they again are trying to increase more things at Pierce, they started soccer, soccer club, because the way you, we've learned about sports is that you start with clubs, and then if those are successful, and you can get more funding, you can move into, you know, spreading it out to be a more competitive league. So they're, they've been working at that at Pierce in general, because I'm a big advocate that if we can start sports, you know, at the elementary, and then definitely try to broaden it at Pierce, that, you know, when students come up to the high school, they feel that much more comfortable to sort of go out for the sport, and it's not a foreign kinda concept for them. But that's just, that's just a budget struggle that we're having in general. Unfortunately, sports were cut, probably after the original proposition, two and a half, back in nineteen seventy-nine, when it passed, that sports have continually been cut in the schools. I mean, in arts as well, but sports definitely, that there was hardly anything there, when my daughter, who's a senior at the high school, started at Pierce. It's gotten a little bit better, but again, it takes some time, and it takes money. Yeah.
Member O'Sullivan.
Thank you for coming, and it's nice to see you all. Couple, couple of questions. One is, I'm wondering, does CDM have a role or involvement with the diversity committees at the different schools? Are some of you members of diversity committees at, at our different schools? Or do you have a relationship with, with them in terms of advisory, or any, anything along those lines?
Well, yes, I am a member of the diversity committee at Weber.
Uh-huh.
Oh, yes. As I was saying, I am a member of the diversity committee at Weber.
I have representatives on, on the committee that are all in the school system, in each school, that report back. It is CDM that created the diversity committees, and so, we're kind of like, I would say, the umbrella, and they report back to us often about what's going on, within the respective schools.
Oh, good. Good. So there is some communication that goes back and forth.
Yeah.
Great, great, thank you. My other comment was about, you're referring to wanting to develop a plan around diversity, and, and I'm involved with the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, I'm still getting the names right.
Sorry.
And one of the goals of the Strategic Planning Committee is working with the task force working on cultural competence, and I imagine you all have been involved in that in some regard, but that, that's certainly the beginnings of, of developing plans for that. So that will be coming out more, it's, it's a work in progress right now, but I would say probably in March sometime, you know, first round draft of that should be available, and we hope you'll be able to review it and give us your feedback.
Not that it involves thousands, no. It'd be interesting to see if there's a staff committee.
Uh-uh. Uh-uh. It's a, it's a mix.
An advisory committee of the school committee.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, yeah, the Strategic Planning Subcommittee is a subcommittee of the school committee, so it has some school committee members, and some community representatives and administration. But there, there are task forces that are working on different initiatives, and cultural competence is one of five. So stay tuned, and, and keep in touch, because it'd be great to have your input.
Sorry, just, what's the composition of that, the task force on cultural competence?
You know, I don't know it right off, that Karen Spalding from Pierce, and Elaine McNeil-Drumay are working with that committee, so they'd be able to tell you more about it. I don't, I don't know the specifics of who the members are.
I just wanted to add a couple thoughts on the Tucker project that has started. For those of you who don't know, they have started group lessons for the kids so that they can take clarinet, or take the violin. We did get some money, some grant money from, I can't remember, but Rebecca Damiani was able to get some money. And my concern, we're in the process of trying to find other sources, but I also think it's important that the school community also has some money to keep this going, because it would be a shame if we couldn't get grant money for, say, a semester, that it would, that these kids would not get lessons. There's about, I think there's about twelve kids that are taking it currently. The goal is to, for kids who may not be able to pay for the lessons, you know, it's expensive to, to rent a instrument, and to take lessons every week. So we were able to get some donations of instruments, and it's a, it's a great program, and the kids really seem to be enjoying it, and it would be great if we could continue this for the fourth and fifth grade. As I said, it's just a, it's just a pilot, and we don't know if it's going to continue, but to have the support of all of you would be wonderful.
Thank you. So you, you referenced possible, putting together a plan for future discussion, I'm wondering if you have any suggestions?
One thing that I've spoken with people at Tucker about, and just in general, is, I think when we're talking about diversity here, we're not trying to add any students, we certainly have a diverse community. So I am more concerned with sort of the tracking of their success over time. If there's any evidence that the kids who are doing well in elementary school also do well in high school, or if there's any sort of drop-off, I understand some of this information is very sensitive, you may not be able to share it with us, but maybe without names and identification, we can do some real... names and identification, we can do some real sort of granular understanding of who is doing well in the minority populations and who isn't. Is it all solely based on income? Are there things that happen in middle school and high school? Because I think, you know, the kids are there, but there certainly is some drop off in their success. And if there's anything that happens early on that we can sort of look at to prevent or to bolster them in some way, because that's one of the other things with Tucker was we tried to add some enrichment programs in the after school. We worked with the after school programs, say, well, there are certain things that are offered in another school that we would like to have offered here, chess club, for example. We wanted to add that, just things to bolster kids that may need any additional help. We're also doing a math league on Tuesday mornings, you know, which I don't love getting up at 7:00 AM, but, so those are things that I'd like to see, just some more information granularly for the students that across the country and sort of historically don't do as well as they should.
And to that point, I know that that, A, analysis at that level is ongoing, because that's how we get some of our academic feedback at this time, but I think to your point, making sure that we're not just looking specifically for individual student performance, but we're incorporating the other factors, and then publicizing it to the extent that we can, I think is good.
I think that another element of that is looking, we do a lot of initiatives, and at the school levels, a lot of things happen, and some of those things really work well and others probably not as well. So of taking a plan would take a critical look at the ones that have real leverage for student and their performance, and then do more of those and less of other things. One of the things that we note is, if you think about like the, what the teachers and the staff of the school does, is that they're always looking for new innovation. What we're asking for in a plan, I think, really talks more about the analytical piece of deciding what really worked and what didn't work, so that some things could come off the plate, and we can actually accelerate the things that do. So that's where I think we would talk about a plan.
That's an excellent point as well. I know that Dr. Spalding, that comes to mind, Dr. Spalding at the middle school has furnished us with some feedback, I don't know if it has to do with, on the subject specifically, but she is very good about telling us what is working and what is not working, and making sure that she is then redirecting her resources in a way that's not, so we'll make sure that we identify where that is ongoing and pursue that where it is not, so. Thank you.
Right, that's a good example of the way she works, is a good example of what we're talking about. In that context, a report like this would include the analysis, Pat refers to, an analysis of the strengths and of the weaknesses. You know, with all due respect, this report is kind of a celebration of the good news, like in the AP, the AP section starts out with highlights, which is all good news. But to have a plan that's not only building on the strengths but addressing the weaknesses, you won't have a report that looks at both.
Excellent. Remember, Ellen?
Yes. Can I also just, to ask, I know that you say you have a lot of initiatives that you work at the elementary schools with, or I guess the schools in general, but can you just, because I'm still not as familiar, do you meet with the diversity committees at the schools? Because I know I used to be on the Collicott Diversity Committee when I was there, because I was one of the founders of the One Book One School, which was the project that came out of the diversity, that still continues today. So do you, how does that work or structure? Do you meet with, do you have a monthly meeting and they, and all of the representatives from the school come to your meeting and report what's being done, or can you speak about that or how that works? Just because I'm not familiar.
Just one thing I would share is that we, twice each year, each school year, we and the, so CDM and MPS co-sponsor a district-wide meeting of all of the diversity committees and the administration and CDM. So we're getting, so we're sort of sharing on particular topics at those, in fact, it was last year at this time when we did a meeting on athletics and music and arts, and invited in a lot of folks from the town leagues, et cetera, and talked with the committees about how that, you know, what could go forward, and in fact, some of these initiatives that we're talking about tonight came out of that meeting. And then, you know, typically at each of those convenings, these, you know, semi-annual convenings, the committees break out and talk about their work, or how could they implement the things that have been shared at the meetings and report back. So there is a lot of sharing back, you know, between CDM, MPS, you know, the administration and the committees on that basis.
So it's all, so all the other town, like town committees or associations are invited to those semi-annual meetings?
No, what I just mentioned about the one last year about the arts and athletics was sort of an unusual circumstance, which was great. But typically, it's folks within the diversity, that are part of the diversity committees, both teachers, administrators and parents at each of, that are, take part in each of the six diversity committees, come together with CDM and the administration to talk about, you know, selected topics each year. We have another, we have already had one this year, and we have another one coming up in March? Is that correct? So we've been doing those for at least a half a dozen years. So that's a way that we're sharing back and we're exchanging ideas and, you know, sort of setting goals and sharing best practices on a regular basis with the committees.
So at those twice a year meetings?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
As Kara said, she's a member of the Glover Diversity Committee. I've been attending the joint meetings of the Glover and Tucker Diversity Committees several years. I attended the Cunningham one, so we have, yeah, Pat's attended the Collicott. So we have someone from our group sort of assigned to each diversity committee and participate in them as we get invited to or as we're able to. But we don't have like a monthly meeting where we bring together all the.
Okay. All right, good to know, thanks. Just, I just was unsure.
We were involved in starting most of them.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you for giving up your evening and coming tonight. I want to thank you for your comments, your constructive criticisms, and for your genuine work, heartfelt work, making the MPS and our communities a better place by embracing and cultivating our natural diversity here in town. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Anything else comes up, please feel free to contact us. Thank you.
I think we can return to the finance subcommittee?
Yes, I think we're back under item seven.
Okay, so that's me.
That's you.
So the last time the finance subcommittee met was on Monday, the 8th. We didn't meet last Monday because, this past Monday, because it was a holiday. I will skip the Milton, Milton Summer Enrichment Salary Schedule and Fee Schedule for now. I'll talk about that in a minute. We went over, we were updated on a list of grants, donations and awards to date this fiscal, this school year, fiscal year. I'm just going to read through the list because it sounds really nice. Safe and Supported Schools, Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, $20,000. Blue Hills Community Health Alliance Grant, $25,000. Milton Foundation for Education Fall Cycle Grants in various amounts. Thank you to the MFE, as always. Thank you to all of these entities. Looters Environmental Incorporated, $50 donation. Copeland Family Foundation, donation of $50,000 to be added to the Charles and Gladys Copeland Scholarship Fund at Milton High, and a Healthier U.S. School Challenge Smarter Lunchroom Grant, which I don't have the exact figure for.
Three thousand.
So all of that, pardon me?
Three thousand.
Three thousand. I do have the exact figure sitting to my right. Okay. So, several things that we went over. One was the Milton Summer Enrichment Student Fees. Oh, no, that was last week. We already voted on that. Thank you very much. One was the Milton Summer Enrichment Salary Schedule, which you have in an attachment, and I don't have. Margaret has.
No, I'm sure you have somewhere.
No. So this is wrong. This is wrong. It's not the salary schedule that we're voting on. That was a vote that was in the meeting. What we're voting on today is the raise in the tuition for fiscal year 19 for the Guile Road Campus Preschool. It's pre-K only, three full days per week. We're raising that from $37.50 to $4,000 because it is actually more than half the time of the full day program at the Blue Hills Campus, which is $8,000. We're raising the fees for the Guile Road Campus full day, pre-K, three days a week, to $4,000, so it will be in closer alignment with that. It's actually still not quite in alignment because it is three full days, more than half the time. But on that, we will have to vote, and I'll, I will make a motion for that in a minute, but I'm going to do it along with the music program registration per session. Now, this is not going to affect the actual fees per lesson, but it's going to affect the registration fee. It's going to go from $40 to $45, an increase of $5, and this additional $5 per student registration is going to go for repair of instruments. So, we need to raise that fee to take care of the instruments that we, the schools own, that we need to keep in repair, which is costing more money than the $40 will cover. So we're taking it up to $40, $45. So that's it. That's what we need to vote on. I'm sorry about the salary increase. I was looking at the wrong, the wrong list. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the amended fiscal 19 fee schedule to include the increase in the preschool tuition fee at Guile Road to $4,000, and to increase the registration per session for the music program to $45.
Second.
Any discussion about this?
Just housekeeping, should the column next to the registration per session, should the change column reflect $5? Is that just?
Oh, it should reflect $5, yes. Thank you for that. But the number here is correct, the change, the change is not.
Good, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. And the only other thing we have to do is to approve the vendor warrant. So I'm going to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number 28 dated January 11th, 2018, in the amount of $471,483.24.
Second.
All in favor? All abstaining? Okay, it's 501 then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you. All right, so policy.
Okay, well, so we have before you this evening, two policies. Second reading of our health and wellness policy. Thank you to Members Rosemary and Varela. We worked a little bit on the policy from previous meeting, and I really think that it is in very good shape. You'll have a copy of it here. We didn't really make any substantial changes. Should say draft on it until we approve it. I think there is two policies. I don't quite know.
There's, you made a minor revision.
Right.
And so the old version is on front and the newer version's in the back.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm like, very confused by that.
You'll notice at the end of the first one, it says first and second reading last.
Yep.
Last meeting, the last page, it's corrected to first reading, first reading last time, second reading tonight. Just minor edits.
I see it.
All right, great.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the health and wellness, Milton Public Schools' health and wellness policy.
Second.
Any discussion about the policy? Member, Ada, did the correction that you sent, it got me, right?
Yes.
I thought it did, right? This is a very comprehensive policy. Any conversation about it or any questions?
Would that be policy IHAMD?
Yes. It's policy IHAMD.
Just want to make sure for the record.
Milton Public Schools Wellness Policy. All right? So the motion's on the table, it's been seconded. All in favor? Jackie Morgan will be very pleased. And then I anticipate that there'll be some.
We should name the policy after Kevin, because it is IHAMD. I have a MD.
There you go. Love it. And it will definitely have, well, there'll definitely be some things to add to it. Once we get the health education changes in the elementary school, I'm sure we'll come back and add those things once we have them. So looking forward to those changes that I know they're in working on. The other policy we have here in front of you is BEDG Minutes. Very simple title. This change in policy is because of a change in the open meeting law requirements. If you look at the two versions in front of you, the one with the red is the one that we are changing. And we are adding that line that says, "The open meeting law requires public bodies to approve meeting minutes in a timely manner. Public bodies that approve meeting minutes within the next three meetings or 30 days, whichever occurs latest, will have approved the minutes in a timely manner." This is a change. So that's why at your subcommittee and advisory committee meetings, you must approve minutes each time. It is required. Okay? And finance, we meet so often, you would actually, but, so. So this is only a first reading. I'm not really sure, Dr. Don, do we need a second reading the next time, or what do you think? You're in charge.
Why?
Look it over?
Yeah, why don't we give people a chance to look it over? There's no reason to, I prefer to.
Okay, follow the book.
Move expeditiously only if there's explicit, as opposed to indifference to those.
All right, so we'll vote on that next time around.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you. All right.
All right, thank you. So Strategic Planning Advisory Committee Report.
I am here to just give you an update about what the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee has been up to. As you may recall, the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee has identified five strategic goals that are being addressed by five task forces, and at least one member of the Strategic Planning Committee serves as a liaison for each of these task forces. And those task forces are curriculum and instruction, technology, data use, cultural competency, and social emotional learning. And as I was preparing for tonight to give you this update, I have put together just a little crosswalk document just for you all to kind of help clarify for you how the goals of the Strategic Planning Committee are aligned with the school committee goals. And I've put it all in one document for you to be able to see them. So you'll see when it comes around, the topics for the different goals. Then the second column, the center column, are our school committee goals for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And then the right-hand column are the draft goals for the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee that are being stated for three to five-year period. And so you can see that they're, they're pretty much aligned, that curriculum and instruction, the, the goals that are in the process of being drafted for the Strategic Planning Subcommittee are broader for a longer period of time than our goals, which are just a one-year goal. But I think in general, they're, they're quite well-aligned for each of those topics that you see here. There are two discrepancies in that there's the facilities goal that our school committee has, looking at facilities and enrollment trends. And the data use goal that is a goal of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee that is not one of the school committee goals. So there, there's a little bit of difference there between the two, but I think they're, they're pretty well-aligned. So if you have any comments on that, I'm happy to hear. But let me just tell you a little bit more about what we're, what we're doing. So we're in the process of drafting, developing a three to five-year strategic plan for the school committee to approve. And the plan will contain our vision statement that you all approved, our goals for the different initiatives that we've identified, objectives for those goals and activities. And so we've selected a template that we're using for assembling those goals, objectives, and activities for a strategic plan. And each task force that's working on these different goals has developed, has drafted objectives and activities related to those goals. And they're still very much in draft form. But in the coming weeks, those task forces will meet to review and fill in any pieces for their portion of the plan that might be missing. And what we discussed at the last Strategic Planning Advisory Committee meeting was that we would love to have school committee members be a part of that conversation with, on those different initiative groups. And so what we are suggesting is if you're interested and available to volunteer to attend one initiative task force meeting in the coming six weeks or so to learn more about their work and to share your thoughts about goals and objectives and activities so that the school committee input will be included in that conversation and, and the development of those plans. And I actually brought a little sheet here that has a listing of all of the task forces at a place where you could sign up for. I'll start right over here with that. If you can just pass it around, that would be great. So really, I think the thinking was that this is, this is ultimately our plan that will come to us to be developed. The Strategic Planning Advisory Committee is, is working on it, but we want to have school committee input at every step of the way. And obviously approval. So the strategic initiative, goals, objectives, and activities will be brought back to the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee at our March sixth meeting. And then we'll review and compile the material into a draft plan, which we will then bring to the school committee for further input, recommendations, and eventually your approval. Any questions?
So I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just going to say, I assume it's okay for us to sign up for multiple?
Sure. Sure.
So hold on, hold on. Dr. Craig.
No, no, no. Go ahead. Go ahead. It might be a similar, I have several questions.
No, go ahead.
One might be similar. Are there times for these task force meetings?
They haven't been determined yet.
So whatever we sign up for, we may not be able to meet if we, if we have a conflict.
Right.
Okay. So that was, that was my question. One of my questions. First of all, I wanted to start out by saying, you are probably the most organized person that I've ever met. This is amazing. You've got, I had questions as you were getting ready to go through it and you were just saying, oh, no, here's the timeline and here's where they're going to meet and here's the, the signup sheet and everything. So it's great. So I have a sense of, of how this is working together. Do you have, the members of the advisory committee are all, did you say they're all leading one of these tasks?
They're, they're acting as liaisons, basically, between the Strategic Planning Committee and the task forces.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah. And so there's at least one liaison from the Strategic Planning Committee that's liaison with each task force.
I see. Okay. Okay. That, that pretty much answers several of my questions, I think. Yeah. And so they're all going to report back to the larger group in early March.
Early March.
Then you're going to have a draft for us.
Sometime after that. Depends on how much work needs to be done to kind of put it together, but we're hoping. And ultimately, the, the thinking and our goal has been to get this process in shape so that it can then inform our goal setting for next year.
Right.
So that it will be available in sort of a more timely fashion. This year was kind of a catch-up year trying to get this process in order and so that we could do that.
I really appreciate the open invitation for us to attend these various task force meetings because one of my questions at the beginning of our goal-setting process, late summer, early fall, was what is the connection between the strategic planning and our goals and who's setting, who's, who's driving the bus, basically?
Yeah.
And so I think, I think that having school committee input as part of this sort of answers that question for me.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was the same, we're having the same conversation in the Strategic Planning Committee. And that was why this morning I was, I was trying to think about this and putting, started putting this document together. And I wasn't sure whether it was okay for me to go ahead and share something that hadn't already been shared prior to the meeting, but I figured, let's, let's go for it. And hopefully that it will.
For those watching, by shared before the meeting, you mean emailed out in our preparation packet?
Exactly. Thank you.
Not discussed. Member Varela.
So I have two questions. So in, before I ask the questions, again, thank you for, thank you for this chart. It's, it's free to kind of see, sum, summing it all up, to see where you're at and what the next steps are. So my first one is about facilities. I know you just spoke to it because, and I worked on this with you about what the goal, you know, that this was one of our goals and it would be handled through the Facilities Advisory Committee, as we call it now. So that won't be worked on strategic because it's going to just, just to confirm because it's going to be handled through facilities, right? And that's the reason why there's not a little subgroup for facilities on strategic.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know. I mean, that's the way things are right now. But we've had that conversation too, and I don't think that we've really came up with an answer. And again, this subcommittee, this advisory committee is responsive to what the school committee wants. And so, you know, it's, it's pretty obvious when you look at this chart that there's a, you know, there's a piece there that's not part of the strategic planning process. And I don't know whether having those two groups further aligned is helpful or not.
I, I think it's, if, to, to answer your question in part, I, my, my recollection is that when this process began, it was sort of the third pillar of our planning process. It was the first two pillars being our financial long-term plan, the second pillar being the facilities financial plan. And this focused more on academics. I, I think we're welcome to expand it to, to become a sort of an overarching thing that encompasses all, all three of those pillars. And I think that, you know, in terms of the facilities piece, there's the, the elephant in the room, which is our current space issue. And then there's the other major piece that I can think of off the top of my head is our, our maintenance issues. We had DRA come in. So I think a lot of our strategic planning in that has, we're doing, whether we want to include it in this.
Well, I just, I just, I just personally think that because, because this issue, I mean, I mean, yes, they overlap. You know, the work that you do in facilities is strategic planning. I mean, what we had earlier tonight, just to your point, is, you know, prepping, you know, prepping for the future and foreseeing what needs to be done, et cetera, et cetera. But, but I, I do think it's kind of duplicating efforts to have, you know, sort of a task force on, on this goal for you guys when, you know, I think it really needs to be handled in facilities, you know.
Or if, you know, I was thinking, you know, should the facility subcommittee serve as the task force?
That's what I, that's what I think should happen. Because it's really something that's going, that's the best, I believe, the best place for it, you know, and then the recommendations would be from that. So I think you could just, just for clarity for us to say, well, that, that sort of task force is going to go into one of our other advisor committees. Because I, I think, I just, I don't know, I just think that would make the most sense just to understand the responsibilities. And then the second thing to, to Dr. Craighead's point is that these are, these are all great, but I still, just for clarity, is, is that, you know, like you said, when you're going to report back to strategic, and I'm assuming maybe to try to have recommendations to this committee by, you know, by the end of the school, the end of the school year so we can, then when we set our, when the school committee sets its overall goals. I mean, I, I think that it's great that we can participate in these task force, if we can make the meetings like Dr. Craighead said, so that we, we can give the input and whatever. But the task force themselves, you know, are, are composed of, you know, community members, other, you know, staff members, et cetera, et cetera. And then, and then we use this, that when we're setting our, our yearly goals, you know, some things we'll take verbatim, some things we'll tweak, some things we might not, I mean, you know, it depends, right? But I think it's great to be able to have this advisor group to kind of do a lot of that prep work so that I think it would make our, I'm calling it a powwow, but it's a.
Yeah.
Retreat. Retreat. Thank you. It's escaped me. But, you know, our, our retreat may be that much more successful and, you know, even help us really kind of, you know, be more concise and with our, with our overall, you know, yearly goals. So just, just kind of wanted that, yeah, that clarity. I think it's great and I'm going to try to make those task force I signed up for. But overall, I think that, just want to make clear that the Strategic Advisory Committee, it's great and they'll do this work and then make the overall recommendation to the school committee.
Member Varela.
Yes, but the ultimate goal is a plan that we will vote on as a school committee.
Three to five-year goal.
That's why your input into the subcommittees and understanding it is important.
Yeah. And the plan will have, not just these goals, but it will have objectives and activities that are already being drafted and.
Member Varela.
Right. So I'm going to, I'm going to debate that in the sense that because it's an advisory committee and it, and it, and we have the, and we have, we have these goals and task force to make recommendations on all these areas. But, but I look at it more as though that, than the strategic. I don't, I don't think that we, our, our goal is to approve or not approve all of the recommendations that the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee sets to us. I think it's, I think we should look at it that the, the goal of this advisory committee is for them to, you know, come up with these strategic areas that we need to address. It's great that you've, you've sort of cascaded out into these task groups to address them and then make the recommendations. But at the end of the, at the end of the school year, I think that they are, the goal, the goal of this advisory committee is to make recommendations. And then we, we, we don't vote on them, just like I'm going to use my transportation advisory committee. We don't really vote on the things that we are changing or recommending that we do, you know, safety-wise. Sometimes I think the advisory committees are there just for that role, to advise us. But I don't, I don't want to be bound to having to vote on what the Strategic Planning Committee, Advisory Committee recommended to us. I feel like it's, they make the recommendations and then, and then when we have our annual retreat and as a school committee make our overall goals, we draw from this.
That's not the vision of the strategic. Sorry.
Yeah?
So the, the vision is to create a strategic plan that we adapt and that we are actually going to work on, separate from the goals we set yearly or long-term. But these are a big district vision for things that we are working on strategically. So that's the plan.
And looking at a three to five-year.
Yeah.
Period of time.
Right. So, and that, and then as Dr. Pavlichek was having a conversation with us as the Strategic Advisory Committee, that the hardest part about once you have a strategic plan is updating it, maintaining it, realizing that you're accomplishing things, where are you moving with certain things? These are more of a larger overarching vision for the strategic plan of the district, not the, the, the goals necessarily that we set for one year or maybe two years. So that's why when we were at the Strategic Advisory Committee meeting, I, and Ada and I said, I really think it's important for school committee members to go to or be a part of some of the discussion because that's where we bumped up against strategic plan at our retreat. It was a lack of understanding.
Good question. Yeah. I just.
So I, that's a good point. So, so the reason why I think I'm debating this is because as long as I've been on the school committee, when we have our yearly retreat, the goals that we make, some of them are for the year and some of them have been long-term, have been ongoing and three to five. So what I'm confused about is then our retreat should only be a yearly, a yearly goal? And then these are, the strategic plan is, is our, is the long-term goals of the district? Do you know what I mean? I just, I don't, I don't know. It's confusing to me.
I, I like, I like to think of it as, you know, we, what we found, we are, so my perception of this, what we found that we were lacking the last several years in our strategic meetings and our retreats was the level above that strategic meeting, that we would put together annual goals. We put together two-year goals that, that would coincide with the superintendent's evaluation cycle. But the question then became, so what, what's, what's the level above that? Why are we doing this? Are we, are we just doing this to have things to measure? What's the longer-term goal? And, and this document that we're attempting to create is that larger vision that sets the district on a path. And then as, as a school committee, we can at our annual retreat, select from that vision things that we want to focus on, things that we would encourage the superintendent to focus on. But others in the district can then look at the plan and, and identify things that are in their lane and work on those to sort of move things forward. And, you know, as, as you and Dr. Pavlichek identified, that the difficult thing is curating this as you move forward and making it a true living document so they don't look at it in four years and it's, it's static.
Right.
Okay.
And I think it's important to know, being a member of this strategic planning group, that the areas that they identified are really spinoffs of your goals. So the strategic planning didn't say, in the big picture for the district, we're not going to address social emotional. And that was one of your goals. So for me, and I, that's why I think what Ada has prepared here, was it valuable? And she brought to your attention the facilities and the data. To me, the data over will be valuable in all of those areas. But to me, they're in sync. And so the strategic plan, to me, is the big umbrella. And then the school committee, you know, you might come up to this working document that Glenn refers to, you might come up in your summer meeting with a. that Glenn refers to, you might come up in your summer meeting with a new goal. Well, the strategic planning is a, it's a living document, and the committee will stay together. Again, if it wasn't in sync like this, and you had five school committee goals that the Strategic Planning Committee wasn't really interested in or didn't identify, they just didn't take yours either, when they brainstormed on behalf of the district and then took your goals. They synced together.
And I, for me also, part of this was, sort of year after year, we had these goals that were sort of in the same family ballpark. And so how do you, how do you contextualize that and make it part of a more cohesive, you know, we'd talk about social, emotional learning, and one year we'd be focusing on this and the other on that, and, you know. So I think this sort of helps give the framework, one level above our annual or two-year goals.
And there, hopefully, will be goals that will be accomplished, and we can take them off the list and add new ones. Wouldn't that be nice? That's really, I mean, that, and so, again, you know, the school committee gets to a summer retreat and realizes, well, this, we've really taken care of this, and to adequate degree, and, but this other issue has taken, you know, forefront, and we need to add this. And that will then inform the Strategic Planning Committee for sort of their next year's work.
I think it is worth discussing at your next advisory committee meeting, whether you want to add facilities and finances as line items that can then be deferred to the various advisory or subcommittees respectively, so that it's a, it is a truly umbrella document versus, you know, a slightly more narrow, so that when we do meet in this, in this summer for our retreat, we seem to have all of our bases covered under this strategic planning document.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's good. Thank you for talking it out. It's making more sense. Well, can I just say, I just want to thank Ada so much. She took, I know that you, Dr. Donahue, and Leroy Walker were instrumental in starting it with Steve Paxia, and I know that Ada has really just come along and managed, because sometimes I, the meetings go a little off-rail, mostly my fault, and she just really manages to sort of really help us to focus and really organize all this routine. And I really feel like we're getting someplace now, and I think that the members of the advisory committee feel that way too. So thank you, Ada.
Well, we have some great members of the Strategic Planning Committee also. I have to say, Karen Spalding in particular has been really instrumental in bringing us along. And at our last meeting, we were all just so excited about seeing things taking shape in a way that none of us quite expected, that we'd be moving along so well.
And Steve.
Thank you.
I didn't sign that because, well, I'll just go. No, I'm just going to. Okay. I'll be there. Going to everything. Martha Brady. Signing up for everything.
All right. Approval of minutes.
I love you. So right.
It's fun to read these.
I feel like we already approved the November 9 minutes.
I think so.
But we can approve them again.
Okay.
Because they were just on the safe side, there's no edits. So I'm going to make an omnibus motion. I think we're all here for all of these.
Yep. You are.
Yes. To approve the minutes of November 9, 2017, November 15, 2017, December 6, 2017, and January 3, 2018.
Wow. Second.
Excellent. Any discussion, any edits? Yes, Dr. Craig?
I would just like to go on the record that in reference to the policy subcommittee report, we are doing this in an untimely fashion.
Thank you. I thought November 9th had already been approved.
That's right.
Which had it been, would make this a timely fashion.
Slightly less untimely fashion.
But, no, it would have been timely. Three meetings.
Three meetings. Four thirty.
Three days, three days, whichever is later.
I had to read that three times to understand it.
Whichever is later. Okay.
English teacher or professor.
So removed and seconded. Any discussions or edits?
Thank you.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you. Full business. Nuns, citizen speak, topic response, none. Next meeting agenda items. I think we are, so we're doing five Wednesdays in January, right? So we're two, we're two weeks out from our next meeting?
I don't know.
I think it's our first week of February.
The names are a little bit weird moving forward.
So can I ask, I know, I just, I asked this earlier, because when we read the minutes too, within the minutes, but
Three weeks.
At some time between, yeah, by the end of March, you know, depending on this, putting the schedule together, but I would like Mr. Madden to come back again and explain the Bay State League, the divisions, I guess, because I still don't quite understand them. And as I said to you guys in the fall, I'm on the school committee, and now that I have a son up there playing sports, I get asked all the time, and I really can't speak to it because I don't
You would ask that.
Quite understand.
I'll make that agenda item.
You know, just do a presentation on that we're part of the Bay State and how that, how that plan goes. Because there's a lot of parents that tend to ask.
Do a reorganization.
Yeah, just, it would be great.
And anything else, I would add, anything else he feels is germane to that conversation, whether he feels a discussion about collegiate athletics sort of falls into that and, you know, he's, he's welcome to expand on that, to the extent he feels necessary. All right. Remember, Craig had alluded to one before, we didn't put the summer pay adjustment on this adjustment, so we, on this agenda, so we should put it on, since it was voted in finance.
Yeah, we voted in finance. So it should go on the next agenda.
That was inadvertently left off the agenda.
That's, I was confused.
All right.
I thought you did great.
And anything else, you can email Mary herself. Citizen speak. Nobody's here. Excellent. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We'll adjourn. Thank you very much, Mary.